They're meeting a council for May 26th to order at 3:00 PM. Jody?
Okay. Please note, council meetings are streamed live and recorded on YouTube. Attendees acknowledge that in accordance with Section 17-2 of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, names, addresses, and other details provided when speaking at a council meeting will be publicly shared. Should you have any questions related to the collection or disclosure of personal information, please contact the Legislative and Advisory Services Division for the Town of High River by sending an email to FOIP, that's F-O-I-P at highriver.ca.
Thanks, Jody. Adoption of today's agenda, I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Kinghorn that council adopt the agenda for this regular council meeting, May 26th as presented.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass, you have my motion.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? An approval of previous meeting minutes. I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Walsh that omnibus motion adopts the following in accordance with council's procedure by law, the May 5th annual meeting with Foothills School Division minutes is presented, and the May 12th regular council meeting minutes.
I'll give you that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? First one, the community art policy with the tree art. Jocelyn?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today, I am presenting our first community art proposal since passing our community art policy. Lee Peckham with the High River Tree Art Committee is here with me, and she has submitted an application to include two more trees to be carved in George Lane Park. This one to be done by Ron Schmidt. The concepts are attached in the agenda for your review. Ron has noted that these are concepts, and the end result could change during the carving process. The carvings will be sealed in linseed oil, which is a natural product, and the art will weather naturally once completed. The total request is for $1,600, which includes materials and tools to carve. He does not want a artist's fee. The location of the trees will be near the public washroom, and Ron is ready to begin the project once and if approval is received. Does council have any questions?
Counselor Kinghorn, thanks, Jocelyn.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. I assume these are trees that Darlene's designated as dead, or however she does it. Thank you.
Oops, sorry, they're already chopped down to the 10 feet.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass, and thank you, Lee, for your commitment to this project. I think it's pretty cool. I've seen some of the pictures that you had for an event that you attended. I really like the stuff that Ron has sort of already put out into the community, whether he takes accolades for it or not. Can we show some of the pictures that Lee shared?
Where were they shared?
I think they're shared just under that.
Yeah, if you click on the PDF, yeah.
Yeah. No, that's okay. I know some people have seen them through town, and some of them are kind of hidden, but I keep getting pictures popped up. But I think they're amazing, some of the things that he's done, and we've seen his donkey, and his pig, and his ducks. And then I think he has a couple proposals of what he has planned. I think his work is amazing, and I'm totally in favor of him doing these projects. Thank you.
Well said, Jenny. No further questions. I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Barton that council award $1,600 to the tree art coordinator to fund two new tree carving art pieces in George Lane Park to be completed by fall 2025.
You have my motion, Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Doing a great job. Appointment of the Director of Emergency Management. Trevor?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's awfully warm in here. Little levity. In accordance with the Town of High River Emergency Management Bylaw 4591-2021, council is required to appoint a director and two deputy directors of emergency management. Director of Emergency Management is responsible for leading the town's emergency management program, ensuring legislative compliance, and coordinating responses to emergencies and disasters. Chief Cody Zebidy served as DEM since 2021. Following his departure from the town on February 28th, 2025, the DEM position became vacant. Council is now required to appoint a new director to maintain program leadership and compliance with municipal and provincial requirements. It is my recommendation today that council rescind Resolution RC 164-2021, appointing Cody Zebidy as Director of Emergency Management, and for council to appoint Steve DBN as the new Director of Emergency Management for the Town of High River.
Thanks, Trevor. Any questions from council? Obviously, Steve, you've been with us for a number of years now. We're all very familiar and very confident with your abilities, so... No questions from council? Go ahead, Jenny.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. I'm sure you guys have vetted his requirements. Can you just let us know what some of those requirements, us being anybody who's listening, I guess, some of the requirements for this position might be, just for...
Through the legislation, it requires, somebody has to have taken the Director of Emergency Management training through the province, as well as maintain an ICS 3 or 400 status. It's very minimal. However, for this position with Cody's departure, we looked at upping that requirement a little bit internally to make sure that our citizens are well looked after during an emergency. And in fact, we are kind of the tip of the spear in our emergency management program with the amount of highly trained individuals we have, and the only municipality that really rivals us right now is the city of Calgary.
Nah, we're better than them, too. I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Jones that council rescind Resolution RC 164-2021 for the appointment of Cody Zebidy as the Director of Emergency Management, and that council appoint now Steve DBN as our new Director of Emergency Management for the Town of High River.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Congratulations, Steve. Or condolences, one or the other. 2025 Hazard Season Preparedness Updates. Steve?
Good afternoon, Council and Mayor Snodgrass. I wanted to put you second because you're always the lead of this. It is our honor here to be in front of council today to provide an update of the Town of High River's 2025 Hazard Season Preparedness Activity, emphasizing flood readiness, regional collaboration, and involving risks posed by climate change. The Town of High River continues to prioritize emergency preparedness as a critical function for municipal operations. Given the community's past flood experiences and the broader impacts of climate change, this year's preparedness efforts focused on enhancing regional coordination and adaptive planning. In 2025, the town formally joined a newly established regional all-hazard incident management team, including representatives of High River, Oka Tokes, Foothills County, Vulcan County, Willow Creek, Nanton, Diamond Valley, and Longview. This intermunicipal team enhances shared capacity to manage hazards such as floods, wildfires, and extreme weather events. Nine of our Town of High River staff members have completed this advanced emergency planning training to support local and regional response efforts. Changing weather patterns are altering the town's traditional risk profile, with increasing concerns for flash flooding from intense rainfalls, wildfires due to extended droughts and low snowpack, river surges from early and rapid snowfelt, severe storms including high winds and hail, heat waves impacting health and infrastructure. These developments require more flexible and future-oriented emergency planning approaches. Our current conditions, as we're seeing as of today, our river flows is lower than historical average. We're actually under a water shortage advisory in the Highwood River. Snowpack levels, as of about five minutes ago, are indicating 148 millimeters of snowwater equivalency, so less than six inches of snow melt left to come. Flood risk currently is low, though sudden change of events, and these new things called atmospheric rivers, could change that. Proactive monitoring and readiness activities remain in place due to the ongoing climate variability. Our town staff use a cross-department approach to ensure operational readiness. Every year, our entire, or every division that we have goes through a checklist, surveillance and monitoring, activation of our river cameras, coordination with the River Forecasting Center, review of the flood hazard assessment, ongoing operational readiness, equipment inspections. Pumps, generators, and water rescue tools are all inspected, checked, and ready for the season. Floodgate testing, dike and outfall maintenance have all been performed. Staging of our hoses and PPE and reviewing that plan has also been completed. Training and exercises. Our ECC staff are trained and ready to respond. Our tabletop for the flood response exercise has already been completed, and swift water awareness training is coming up very shortly for our town staff. Our planning and policy, annual flood preparedness plan, has been updated. Coordination with Foothills County has been conducted, and review of our procedures and contact lists have also been completed. Communication interoperability, our functional checks of our radios, LED signage have all been completed, and we've implemented our public communications plan with our comms team. Our weekly river monitoring updates will be shared every Friday, which began last week before last, and will maintain it once a week unless conditions warrant future and more immediate updates. With all this, our desired outcome from our emergency management team is to protect lives, property, through a robust emergency preparedness and readiness. Adapt infrastructure and policies for emergent climate risks. Build public confidence through timely updates and education. Strengthen regional response through coordinated action and training. And maintain organization agility in shifting hazard environments. Your worship and counsel, I truly believe that our emergency management team and all our divisions are ready for the hazard season. That's the end of our update.
Thanks, Steve. Well done. Any questions from council? The social media posts and everything are fantastic, what you're putting out there, so that it gives people reassurance, knowing that we're never, ever complacent on this topic again, especially this time of year, so you guys are doing a great job. No questions from council? Thanks very much, guys. Thanks, Trevor. Contract award for the building maintenance for Monday Park and Prairie Sound.
Get a whole team today. So, our three divisions with Public Works and Community Support Services, along with corporate properties, which now falls under Legislative and Advisory Services, have been working together on a RFP. So, the RFP was posted for building maintenance services at the town's affordable housing units. This includes all of Monday Park and six units at Prairie Sound. The RFP was posted earlier this year and closed on March 10th, 2025, with two respondents, one being Summit Property Group and the other being SDR Painting and Construction. After reviewing the rates, services, and previous experience, administration recommends Summit Property Group be awarded the contract for one year. The town has previous experience with Summit Property Group, however, not in this building maintenance capacity, so that's why we're suggesting one year. And while Summit has previous experience in this area, they've actually provided this building maintenance and more to affordable housing projects in other municipalities. Previously, you'll note in the council report, Bethany Care was contracted to perform all of the services for the affordable housing. That included the building maintenance, tenant selection, tenant relations, and the rent collection. That contract was in place from late 2009 until the end of 2016, when Bethany Care actually chose not to renew with the town. Previously, at the end of each year, Bethany Care provided the remaining revenue to the town, which was then used to cover debenture costs, and any funds remaining were put into the Affordable Housing Reserve. In 2017, those financial responsibilities were taken in-house, as well as the tenant management portion of those properties. Because housing is not eligible as an FCSS expense, annually, it's estimated about 25% of one full-time equivalent staff member is spending time on these non-FCS eligible activities, and this has already been reflected in the budget. So, they've arbitrarily selected one individual, which is Kate Timstra, and her salary is dedicated 75% to FCSS and 25% to the town budget annually. And this is already included in the approved 2025 operational budget, so you won't see any changes to the operational budget based on that tenant support side. This is more focused on the building maintenance side, which makes it very different what we're looking at today compared to what Bethany Care used to provide. Since Bethany Care stepped away, the building maintenance has been managed by a contracted part-time individual that is no longer providing services, as well as our in-house facilities maintenance team, which is why Nicole is here with Public Works. This approach is anticipated to streamline the building maintenance process, to ensure that the properties are well managed for today and into the future, building into that asset management program. All of the information here is what is supporting administration's recommendation to award the Affordable Housing Building Maintenance Services to Summit Property Group for one year. Does council have any questions or comments regarding the process for the RFPs, or anything that was presented in the council package?
Thanks, Jody. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. So, the previous company was Bethany Care, is that correct? Did they not put in an RFP, or is this not something that we were continuing with?
They did not. So, at the end of 2016, they declined an offer to renew the agreement. So, for the last eight years, then, it's been managed a little bit more ad hoc. There hasn't been one particular contract that oversaw all of those services that Bethany Care did. That's when the tenant management services, I don't want to speak for you, Shelley, tenant management moved into the FCSS portion, and there was a couple different people that were in there providing some part-time building maintenance. However, it wasn't the same in-depth as Bethany Care. And then, that's where building facilities has, our facilities maintenance team has been providing support as well. However, due to capacity and the extent of the facilities that we have and their aging, that's where we decided this RFP is probably the best approach to ensure that the buildings are maintained, as they should be.
Perfect. I just have one more question. I don't know if, I mean, if it's relevant. How did we end up with six units at Prairie Sound?
Ooh, I will let Shelley answer that one.
Thank you. Yes, we had, our original grant that we received was for Monday Parks. That was to do a build. So, that's where we built the three buildings that are there now. So, eight one-bedroom units, eight two-bedroom units, and eight three-bedroom units. We then received a second grant from the government, and instead of doing an additional build, we purchased, at the time, we purchased 10 existing units. So, we purchased four units at Rivers Edge and six units in Prairie Sound. And unfortunately, when Wallisville was released to the government after the flood, we lost those four units. So, that brought us down to six. So, we do have six standalone units that the Town of High River owns in Prairie Sound.
Counselor Barton?
Thanks for the presentation. That was good. Do you have one question, because I'm not quick on math, as you just mentioned? How many units are at Monday Park?
Twenty-four units in total.
Twenty-four? Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
No further questions? What, go ahead?
So, I was just going to, if I can, provide some additional information to that. So, Monday Park, we own the buildings and the grounds. The difference with Prairie Sound is, we basically own our unit, and the interior is our responsibility. They do have a condo board there, and we do have one of our staff members that sits on the condo board, and they have a management company. So, we're not responsible for things like the roof or snow removal, so it's a little bit of a simpler contract than Monday Park. So, Monday Park is where the primary, the most of the work is done.
So, I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Kinghorn that council award the Affordable Housing Building Maintenance Contract to Summit Property Group for a one-year term at a base price of $18,600, not including GST or additional fees for call-outs over and above the base hours, and that council authorize the mayor and CIO to execute the contract for Summit Property Group.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. You have the motion?
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Thanks, Jody, Shelley, Nicole. Joint Use and Planning Agreement with the School Division. Salid?
Good afternoon, council, mayor. So, this proposed joint use agreement is a partnership between the Town of High River Foothills School Division and the Christ the Redeemer Separate School Division. It's intended to lay out the process for the town and the school boards to address matters like the planning, allocation, development, and use of school sites, and also transfers of disposal of land allocated for schools, servicing for the school sites, and the use of a school site and municipal facilities. The agreement addresses issues and topics such as the acquisition and allocation of future school sites, servicing and development of school sites, transfer of school sites, disposal of unneeded school sites, dispute resolution, joint use of municipal and school board facilities. It has an implementation tool, and it comes with some principles that govern how the overall agreement will be managed and administered. It will be overseen by the proposed operating committee, which consists of the town CIO and the superintendents of their, or the delegates of each of the board, school boards. The deadline for completing this agreement has now been extended to June 10, 2025. It only focuses on the actual, how, historically, the school site were allocated and designated in a random way, but this will formalize the process and make it simple and make it agreeable between the school boards and the town. That's all I have to say. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer.
Thanks, Salid. Any questions from council? Counselor Jones?
Thanks, Mayor Snodgrass. In this agreement, I know when we had our meeting with the school council, the school division, only one of them, we had discussed possibly picking one of their sites and maintaining it a little bit more than we have in the past. This agreement, I don't think, leads, has that in there, but will that, this agreement lead to that conversation at all?
The operating committee, when they start to implement the agreement, how it can be implemented, and how it can be adjusted to ensure that that specific component, if there's interest from the town, it can be amended and added to the proposal for sure in the future. If it makes sense and it works for the town, it can be definitely added to the agreement in the future, because during the discussion of this agreement, that topic has not been brought up at all. So, it just came later from one school division, and so we haven't really addressed it at this point. That's why it wasn't being included in the agreement.
But it is a conversation that we can have or still bring up?
Yes.
Even if this is approved?
The operating committee, which is, will be, Chris will be part of the operating committee.
Okay.
They can talk about it among the, with the other school boards. If the three parties agree to, that the town will take it on, it can be added to the agreement in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
No further questions? Yeah, and I think that, that conversation regarding the fields, ball diamonds, soccer pitches, all that kind of stuff is, like you said, wasn't happening when this was drafted, so we'll get this done, and then that'll become... But doing this doesn't stop those conversations or anything, or handcuff anybody for it, so we'll add it as needed, if it even needs to be added, or we just do it, so... I will ask for a motion from Counselor Walsh that council accept and adopt the proposed Joint Use and Planning Agreement between the Town, Foothills School Division, and Christ the Redeemer Separate School Division, and that council direct administration to execute the Joint Use and Planning Agreement with the Foothills School Division and the Christ Redeemer Separate School Division as presented.
You have my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Thanks, Salid. Another topic that was discussed at our meeting, the municipal election agreement with the school divisions. Jody?
Yes. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Now, I'd like to present an agreement for the town to provide election management for the school divisions, both Foothills School Division for their Ward 5 trustee, and Christ the Redeemer Schools for their High River and area trustee. In 2021, we had a similar agreement in place with both school divisions. However, the Christ the Redeemer Schools didn't require an election, as their candidate was acclaimed. That meant that Foothills School Division covered 50% of our election costs, excluding our internal staff time, as the town doesn't pay anything in addition for their existing pay. In order to provide the election services for the school divisions, legislation requires that a formal agreement be in place with specific resolutions passed by each of the parties, so that's why we're here. While this adds to the workload for the election, they do cover their costs for, well, they cover 50%, whether that be 50% with one school division, or essentially 25% for each of the school divisions, depending on who we perform those election services for. But I do feel that it's even more important that this provides a single location for voters to cast their ballots for mayor, counselor, and the school trustees, based on their public or separate school support. If council has any questions regarding the agreement or the election services that are contemplated here, I am open to answering.
It's all okay. Any questions from council? It's not the first time, so... I'll ask for a motion from Counselor Barton that council authorize the Returning Officer Jody Hipkin to enter into an agreement with Foothills School Division and Christ the Redeemer Catholic Schools for the conduct of the 2025 Municipal and School Board Trustee Elections as presented.
You have my motion, Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie? Thank you very much. Council Board Committee reports, anybody? Public comments, anyone? Maureen?
Mayor and council, so I'm using my two minutes as per your rules pertaining to
Mayor and council, so I am using my two minutes as prior rules pertaining to council meeting procedures. I have three questions today. I was wondering how much the town has in their budget for the old dead tree removal, such as the trees which are on 12th Avenue, Center Street, and McLeod Trail. I'd like to know when this work is going to get started? If not, just cutting the dead tree wood down would be a better look. It does not look attractive when you're driving through town. I did another jaunt around town, and McLeod Trail is horrible for the dead trees. It's all those evergreens. I don't know what kind they are, but they're all dead.
So, my question was, is it going to get done today, this year?
No, it won't be done today, but...
Is it in the budget to get them done?
Well, we'd have to get, just, hang on, Maureen. You're dropping a bomb, and we don't have the, like, I don't know, we need Darlene here to tell us what the, what the program is, so we can get you an answer.
Okay.
We will absolutely get you an answer. There's always a, if you look at the, are you talking about the big poplars on 12th?
No, not the poplars. The evergreen trees. There's one right at the High River sign. There's some on 12th.
Yeah, there's, there's dead trees all over. That's part of the life cycle, for sure.
Yeah, and they've been dead for a while. It's not like they just died over, have winter kill.
Yeah. And every, every community's dealing, especially with the big poplars, that a lot of the communities that are as old as High River, when, they all seem to be planting poplars all at the same time, and of course, all their lifespans are coming due at the same time. So, yeah, that's, it's a challenge, and we're dealing with it on 12th Avenue on the big poplars and stuff, but...
It's not the poplars I'm talking about.
No, that's fair. That's fair. No, we'll get, we'll get you an answer from Darlene. She's got the program. Nobody here has that.
Okay. And we're, I'm back to the forty-two percent of the treated water loss. You had said that work was going to be started on Crescent Avenue, which I just drove by again, and there's no sign of work. It is getting to the end of May, and we know what kind of season we have here, so...
Riley, do you know when the work on Crescent Avenue is?
Next summer. This year is design.
This year is design, so next year.
Okay, so is there any updates on where the forty-two percent of the treated water is going?
No update.
No update? Like, you haven't looked into it, or?
No, there's just, there's no update. Like, he's looking into it, and we're like that.
It's going to take some time to get off the road, to do the testing. It'll take the whole summer to pull it down.
Okay. Just this was done previous, was brought to our attention as town citizens about the water loss. Okay.
Was there a third one, or did I miss it?
That was included in the third.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, I'd appreciate the answers.
Yeah, no, we'll get you more information on, from Darlene, on the, on the evergreen tree, and what her, what her thoughts are on it. Thanks, Maureen. Council's correspondence requiring action. Letter request, letter of support request from Rio Alto. This is for Hector's daughter, is that correct? That's, needs to renew work permit and is asking for assistance. Obviously, a lot of the government agencies are, are looking for local support when, when these are happening. We've done this before, certain individuals, so I support this one as well to Amelia's, an asset to their operation, of course, not just a family member, but as a, as a worker, coworker at the, at the restaurant, so. If nobody has any questions, I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Jones that council authorize the mayor to sign the letter of support for Rio Alto's request to support the applications to renew the work permit and permanent residence for Amelia Lillian Lopez Miranda.
I'll give you that motion, Mayor Snodgrass.
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie. High River Rotary Club sponsorship request for their golf tournament. They're asking for six hundred dollars to be a tea green sponsor for their, for the Rotary Club's golf tournament. Councillor Jones?
For Rotary, specific to, have we sponsored any other events that they host recently, or?
I don't think the golf tournament specifically. And here's my thing, is that, you know, when we work with the Rotary Club, it's usually on projects a lot larger than, than a golf tournament. And, of course, right now, we are working together, and we're going to be putting a, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars into the roundabout down there, where they're putting their windmills up in, in a couple of years for their, what is it, a hundred anniversary rotary? Hundredth anniversary rotary? So, you know, I'm, I'm not supportive of, of the, of the tea green sponsor, just because I'd rather work with Rotary on, on much bigger projects that, yeah, just don't have to do everything, but that's going to be a big one that we, that we're involved with directly, so, that's my thoughts.
Thank you.
Anybody interested in the motion coming forward? Where are we going to leave it? Okay, we'll just leave that one alone. Friends of Foothill Schools Foundation for Education Golf Tournament. Jody, Sharon, can somebody explain to me who this organization is and what they do, and why? Please?
So, I don't know a whole lot about them personally. However, I do know that they have presented as a delegation to council, I believe it was last year, where they have the Friends of the Foothill School Foundation, where they are looking to raise funds to support some of the extracurricular activities that seem to be falling short in education lately, such as music, drama, sports. So, they have been doing different fundraising efforts in the community. I'm trying to think of the ones off the top of my head, but I can't right now. But yes, so they have come forward with this request for a donation to support their golf tournament, and I believe this is the first time they've held a golf tournament. Second, second time? Thank you.
Councillor Jones? Thanks, Jody.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. Not a hundred percent, but part of it is, like, the Foothill School Division itself cannot host fundraisers. It's kind of like the library cannot, so they have a Friends of the Library, or the Catholic schools do not do casinos, so they have a Friends of the school that can do the fundraising for them. And so, that's kind of what this is, to raise funds. So, last year, I think they raised about three thousand dollars, and they gave a thousand dollar scholarship, not scholarships, donations to three different schools for various items that they needed. And so, that's what they're, basically there is to do, the fundraising that the Foothill School Division cannot do.
Okay. Thanks, Jenny. I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Kinghorn that council direct administration to donate a hundred and fifty dollars to be a table donor for technology in the classroom for the Friends of Foothill Schools Foundation for Education Golf Tournament.
Thank you, Mayor Snodgrass. You have the motion?
Thank you. All in favor? Foothill's Pride Society Proclamation Request. Of course, June is, is Pride Month. Anybody need to speak to this? We did this last year, did we not? Have we done this before? I thought we had.
No, I, this is the first time that we are doing a proclamation for this.
For a proclamation? Okay.
Oh, Chris is giving me the, "I don't think that's true" look.
I can't remember.
They did attend last year as a delegation at the end of May, I believe it was, or early June.
I think we were late last year.
We were late, but we did make the proclamation, is my understanding, because we also did the rainbow crosswalk at the same time.
Right. And they're having an event in the park or something? That's on, that's their deal, so. I'll ask for a motion from Councillor Walsh that council proclaim June 1st to 30th, 2025 as Pride Month in High River, and that council authorize the mayor to sign the Pride Month proclamation.
You have that motion, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. All in favor? Carrie. Thanks, Jody. Council Correspondents for Information, the Correspondents for the Hospital Foundation, Dinner and Auction, we're always involved with. And from there, I will ask for a motion from Councillor Barton that council recess the regular council meeting, May 26, 2025, at 3:39 PM, and move into a closed meeting.
You have my motion, mayor?
Thank you.